Good morning, good morning and welcome to all of you. My name is Therese Lowry and I am the Executive Director of the Mayor's Office on Women's Policy and the of the D.C. Commission for Women, which co-sponsored this event along with the D.C. Federation for Democratic Women. I believe I speak for both organizations in saying that we are so proud to be part of this first-ever Budget Town Hall that recognizes the importance of women, both as a constituent group and as drivers of the district's economy. This event offers a unique opportunity to hear details of the budget proposed for fiscal year 2014, to provide feedback and express your own fiscal priorities directly to the mayor. Before we begin with the budget presentation, I'd like to make a few quick acknowledgements and then make clear the agenda and the sort of rules of engagement for this morning's event. As you can see, we've got a good turnout for what is sure to be an informative and truly engaging event, and that is due in no small part to a number of individuals and organizations that helped to put this program together. We must acknowledge the work of the D.C. Commission for Women, most of whom are here today, including Nona Richardson, Chair of the Commission, and the D.C. Federation of Democratic Women and their President Estelle Lloyd, who have been excellent partners in putting together this event and recruiting women from across the district to come out and participate. We also must acknowledge and extend thanks to the National Federation of Democratic Women and especially their President Janice Haynes Davis, because the idea for this event actually came out of a meeting between the National Federation and the mayor as part of their efforts to lobby elected leadership in the district and remain civically engaged. Again, both of these organizations, the National and the D.C. Federation, are excellent examples of the power of women as an electorate and the influence we can and should have, given all that we bring to this city. Thanks to Sheila Bunn, the mayor's Deputy Chief of Staff and the highest-ranking female official in the Gray Administration, for all of her support in getting this event on the mayor's busy schedule. Thanks to Steve Glaude, Director of the Office of Community Affairs, and his team, especially Letitia Atkins, Deputy Director, and her staff in the Office of Neighborhood Engagement, who provided logistical support and really helped spread the word for this event. To Ken Stuckey and Kimberly Springel, who run this beautiful facility here at the Sumner School and were so gracious in hosting us here early on a Saturday morning. And thanks to Keith Watkins and his team from the Department of Parks and Recreation, who put together the sound system and technical parts of the mayor's presentation at this and all of the nine other Budget Town Halls across the city. Mr. Mayor, you have an excellent team in these young men. I've worked with them on several large events and they are consummate professionals. They make you proud every time. So, thanks so much for everyone's hard work. And now, onto our Featured Speaker of the Day, who will present his plan for an effective and balanced fiscal year 2014 budget. It is both an honor and a pleasure to introduce the man behind the budget plan, Mayor of the District of Columbia, Vincent C. Gray.
Well, good morning, everybody. Thank you all very much for coming out on a Saturday morning. This is the, I guess as Therese essentially said, this is the first-ever Budget Town Hall meeting for women, and I think it's long overdue, to tell you the truth. We have many women who are in very important positions in the District of Columbia, yet we don't necessarily have parity in all positions either. So, being able to know how the dollars are deployed and spent is a very important part of this. So, we want to go over the budget with you today. We want to let you know that this really augments what we've been doing across the city. I have a Budget Town Hall meeting in every ward, and we've already had six. We've been in every ward thus far, except for Ward Three, which we will be in on Tuesday night, and then Ward Seven, which we will be in on Thursday night. So, that will complete all the ward meetings, but we have added others this year as well, in the interest of trying to be as transparent as we possibly can. Again, I want to thank Therese. I want to thank the Democratic Women's Club. I want to thank all of those who have worked hard, Janice, to be able to help us get here today. So, thank you very much, and I hope that this is the beginning of a trend, that every year, the budget will be brought before our women's leadership in the District of Columbia. We know it will be enriched, and there are probably certain asks I would make of you, you know, along the way too, because it will be, we're still about, what is the date? The 27th?
Yeah.
Yeah, 27. We're still about three or four weeks away from the budget being voted on, and it will be voted on on May 22nd by the council, which is still plenty of time for you all to weigh in on issues that may be important to you. And if there are issues that you have, I'd be happy to try to address those as best I possibly can. You know, being in this job, you hear everything, and every so often, there's some realities of the stuff you hear in the District of Columbia. Oftentimes, it's like a fairy tale, "Once upon a time." So, if there's something that you've heard that, you know, you want to have clarified, I'll do the best that I can, assuming I have information that I can be able to share on that. We're also fortunate to have someone with us today, who I've absolutely thoroughly enjoyed working with. Our Chief Financial Officer, and I've said this so many times, he has chosen to retire, and the mistake he made was he left the date to me. So, while he's made the decision to retire, I've set the date as August of 2020, when he can actually leave. The reality is that he has served 16 years in the Office of the Chief Financial Officer, three years as the Director of the Office of Tax and Revenue, and 13 years, which is incredible, 13 years as the Chief Financial Officer for the District of Columbia. An incredibly demanding job, and I enjoy working with this man. He is a fine human being and he's a fine professional. Please join me in welcoming Dr. Nat Ghandi.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm delighted and pleased to be here. Even though I am a loyal Democrat, Mr. Mayor, and the supporter of women's causes, today I'm here as the independent Chief Financial Officer. And I'm pleased to be here with my colleagues, Gordon McDonald and David Yumansky. We work very closely with your excellent team of executives, particularly Alan Lu, City Administrator, and Eric Goulet, the Budget Director, and indeed them, you have among the best of the professionals to work with. I'll be very brief, but I do want to point this one out, that the mayor's budget is what I would call a fiscally prudent budget. And in front of this audience, it's extremely important to remember, the city, under mayor's leadership, has been financially responsible and fiscally prudent. What does that mean, actually? It simply means that we will not spend any more money than what we take in. It means that we will not use our saving account. It will mean, it means, indeed, that we will not borrow more than what we can afford to have in terms of our debt, meeting the debt services. On all those three fronts, this is a budget that meets the toughest of the tests that we have applied. And beyond the certification of this budget as fiscally prudent, financially responsible, structurally balanced budget, I want to add here to say that, under mayor's leadership, cities' finances are better, better than perhaps any other major city in the country. And these are not simply empty words from Chief Financial Officer. These are the words that are supported by rating agencies that have rated our revenue bonds as AAA. Imagine this is the jurisdiction that was rated Junk Bond Jurisdiction in mid-'90s, when we had $500 million deficit in our fund balance. Today, under mayor's leadership, we have a billion and a half in fund balance, and our ratings are exceptional, best that they have ever been. In February, under mayor's leadership, we went to New York, and mayor was so convincing to rating agencies, but more than that, our economic performance was so outstanding that as soon as we came back, the toughest agency standard and poor immediately upgraded the city. Now, that is remarkable at this time, because this is the time when they're downgrading left and right, municipalities, states, even the U.S. government. The same agency that downgraded U.S. government has upgraded the district government. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the leadership. And the last word I would say, again, one can talk all these words, but what really matters is the tangible, visible results. And all you have to do is to walk in any ward of the city, and you would see a vibrant economic development. We are adding 1,200 new people every month to this city. And those of us who keep counting the cranes, construction cranes out there, the 50-plus out there, and right here in this neighborhood, Mr. Mayor, it was difficult to find a parking space because of all the construction that is ongoing. So, I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your leadership, congratulate you on the economic development, and we will work closely now with the council to make sure that we submit a budget to the Hill after mayor signs it as a structurally balanced budget, and on to 2014, and then 2015 and beyond. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. I want to thank Dr. Gandhi for his outstanding work, and trust me, Dr. Gandhi doesn't render accolades lightly either. So, to get that kind of feedback from Nat Gandhi is really quite a compliment to the work that's been done in the city. Thank you very much, sir. Enjoy your day. All right. As we get started, I want to, you know, we've had Dr. Gandhi to speak. I want to, we have a number of our, several. We have our city administrators here, our deputy mayor is here, and we also have the Director of the Mayor's Office of Budget and Finance, who has done really just a great job working with the CFO's team, and really has been so instrumental in helping us put together a budget that we really are proud of. Please welcome Eric Goulet. All right. The theme of our budget this year is investing for tomorrow, and it's not just words. Those are, that is a challenge. That is a charge to all of us, to make sure that we do the things as a part of the future of the District of Columbia, to look at what we're spending our money on and how those dollars will advance the cause of the District of Columbia. Dr. Gandhi talked about the fiscal turnaround. When I came into office, we were really heading in the wrong direction, in terms of our fund balance and the condition of our finances in the District of Columbia. We were in a perilous situation. All that was left in the fund balance at that stage were two things. One, the bond escrow fund, which is legally required when we float our bonds, and floating our bonds is the same thing as getting a mortgage. That's how we build our buildings and renovate our buildings. So, it's like paying a mortgage when you pay off the bonds. The bond escrow fund is there to be able to pay off a debt, a bond debt, if we weren't able to do it otherwise, and that's legally required. And then, we have a congressionally imposed fund as well, and that is a fund that the Congress set up to make sure we had reserves. So, we had no more discretion at all, and we said, one of the things I said, going back to my campaign, is that we were going to rebuild our fiscal condition, and I'm really proud that we've been able to move rapidly on that. The first year, first-year audit, we had a surplus of $249 million, which went in to rebuild the fund balance, and the audit that we got in February, we have a fund balance of $417 million. So, we now have a fund balance that is tied with the highest in the history of the city. And if you look at the, if you look at that chart before you, you will see that it really is at now one of the highest points ever in the history of the District of Columbia. Dr. Gandhi talked about the fact that our bond rating was elevated. In this fiscal climate, with sequestration, and I don't know how many even had that word in their vocabulary before, two years ago. I know I didn't, right? You know, you heard that word like, "What the heck is sequestration?" Well, we know now, don't we? We know quite well what it is. So, the reality of where we are today is that the city is in a wonderful financial position. I think that there are very few other cities, if any, very few other states, if any, that are in the same position as us, to be able to say that we have a billion and a half-dollar fund balance. And that has values, ladies, in particular, and a few gentlemen that are in the room, ladies and gentlemen. It has tremendous value in terms of sending a message that we are fiscally sound, that we are fiscally stable, and it also earns interest, it earns dollars that we can then plow back into services in the District of Columbia. So, it is nice to be able to be in this position, to have a situation back in the '90s, if you see where that line dipped below the baseline, that means that we were in deep debt, $500 million in debt, and now to be at $1 billion and a half, it is a $2 billion turnaround that we've achieved in this city, and we should be very proud of our city. I know I am. I'm a native Washingtonian. I am proud to be in the District of Columbia. So, let's keep working on that, and let's make sure there will be people who will say, "Let's spend this dollar, let's spend that dollar, let's spend this, let's do that, let's do the other." Not a good idea, okay? It's not a good idea. We have made the commitment to live on what it is that we are bringing in, and I think you will see from this budget that there are, you know, what we're generating in dollars every day is helping us to be able to not only support the services that we have, but to be able to expand our services as well. This budget, we are doing well. We have no new taxes and no new fees. No new taxes and no new fees. Our budget is balanced on the basis of existing revenue coming in the door. Sequestration has already been considered in this budget. We got a new revenue estimate in February of $190 million for the rest of this year. And had that, had sequestration not been upon us, it would have been higher, because we've estimated that we will lose during this year, over the next year, $50 million as a result of sequestration. So, our revenue projection would have been $240 million if we hadn't had to account for sequestration. It was $190 million. So, when people ask you about sequestration, at least on one end of this, the city has accounted for what we think we will lose. We haven't figured out yet what we will do in terms of loss of grants or contracts or whatever, because we just don't know the magnitude of those. We'll just have to make changes in our budget if, in fact, we do lose money through grants or other sources of money coming into the city, but we've accounted for the revenue side. We also reduce taxes in a couple of ways. Municipal bonds, which oftentimes are owned by people who are on fixed incomes, we eliminated that tax on out-of-state municipal bonds, and then we had a double tax that we've eliminated, people who are living in co-ops. They were paying the property taxes, which everybody pays, and they were also paying something called a possessory interest tax, and we've eliminated, we've eliminated the possessory interest tax, so that people will not be paying two taxes. The next slide is hugely important, because it really tells the picture, one, of where we are, and it tells you the picture of what the future formula ought to be for the District of Columbia to be able to remain fiscally viable. There is no reason, ladies, why we shouldn't continue to grow financially. I think we've got an approach in place now that I think is easily understood, not easily executed, obviously, but is easily understood in terms of the things that we stay true to this, we'll be able to continue to grow in ways we otherwise might not have. First of all, in the first bullet, we've got lower unemployment. I said when we came into office, we were going to lower unemployment. We were 11.2% soon after we came in, and we now are down, we got a tenth of a point drop just last week. We are now down at 8.5%. It's one of the biggest drops in unemployment in the nation as a result of the work that we've done, especially through our One City, One Hire program. How many here are familiar with One City, One Hire? Well, we will, we have now gotten, I got the information just yesterday, we now have gotten jobs for 5,965 people in the District of Columbia, getting them back to work. So, it's the lower unemployment, our population growth, which Dr. Gandhi talked about, and then job growth. We have, we've seen, which we expected, a loss in federal government jobs in the District of Columbia, but where we have seen, where we have seen growth is in the private sector. That's what we've been working on. That's a part of the economy, the new economy we're trying to develop. So, we've lost 4,000 federal jobs, but we have added about 30,000 private sector jobs. So, we've added about 26,000 jobs since we've come into office. So, those three things represent the first bullet. And if you look at the dollars, you will see we've added in fiscal year 13, $166 million, and then $152 million in fiscal year 14, we project. The second area is business taxes, and that is, simply put, our businesses are growing. We're adding more businesses. We've got businesses coming into the District of Columbia, because people want to be here, and when they come, they pay business taxes. So, we're projecting an addition of $70 million in the rest of fiscal year 13, and then another $70 million in fiscal year 14. And then, the third area is sales tax, and that is, because we have more businesses, we have more, we have more activity in selling what it is that we sell in the city. Just go in the downtown area almost every night. I was down in the Gallery Place area last night, and you couldn't even get in places. It was so packed. People want to be in the District of Columbia. They want to be here. We are, we are hot right now, and we have got to, we really are, and we've got to be able to work to sustain that, because it is the revenue that will drive the things that we want to do in the District of Columbia. I use the following example in almost every one of my town hall meetings. How many of you have been to Costco? You know, that number of hands goes up in virtually every meeting I'm in. Costco's the first time we've ever had a Costco in the District of Columbia, and it helps us to fulfill one of our six economic goals, and that is to end retail leakage. Who knows what, who knows what retail leakage is? Yes?
When everybody goes out of the city to the shops.
That's exactly right. Did you all hear what she said?
Yes.
Yeah, when people go outside the city and spend their money somewhere else. We're working hard to keep our money in the city, and Costco is a good example of it. You know, I go over to Costco quite a bit, and the first thing I do is probably unlike other people, and that is, I ride through the parking lot. Anybody know why I ride through the parking lot? Looking at the tags. That's exactly right. Looking at the tags. And about half the tags are D.C. tags, and the other half are Maryland and Virginia, which means, by the way, we're not only stemming retail leakage of people leaving the city to shop, but now we're helping to create retail leakage in those other jurisdictions, bringing people in from Maryland and Virginia to shop in the District of Columbia. That's a nice turnaround, isn't it? Instead of people saying, "I'm going to Pentagon City, I'm going to White Flynn, I'm going to, you know, Montgomery Mall, I'm going to all of those places." So, those three things, if I had to show only one slide, this would be the one that I would show, because it is the formula for the future. Continue to grow your population, continue to keep unemployment down, continue to grow the number of jobs, which is related to lower unemployment, get more business tax revenue, which is growing businesses, and then, of course, that will result in more sales taxes. And when you put those together, you should have a formula for being able to grow this city each year. And we've been able to do it, you know, working with a great team of people, we've been able to do this now in two years and three months. And, boy, imagine what we can do with a longer time, you know, each year if we follow our own formula. Imagine what we can do to be able to continue the growth of this city. The next slide shows you how we spend our money. Most of it is spent on human support services, 40% of it, of a $10.1 billion budget, 20% on public education, 60%, and then, the rest of it is spread across the rest of the, the rest of the government. But again, for those who are, you know, questioning, the most of the money is spent at this stage on human support services, $4 billion. And that's why also, and you'll see as this presentation goes on, we're working not just to try to reduce the budget in that area, but to help put people in a different place so that they don't have the needs for some of the supports that this government provides. The next slide is just a list. I wanted you to see this, because we have tried to be as inclusive and as transparent as we possibly can. See all these names of organizations that are up here? Those are the organizations that we met with, and not, that's not the total list, but that we met with before the budget was done, because we wanted input from people to say, "What do you think?", and this is how we will try to craft our budget. So, we did that. We met with a lot of other people, and the budget really reflects in substantial part the input of a lot of people and organizations across the city. Now, the rest of the budget frames, how many of you all participated in our One City Summit down at the Convention Center last year? Remember that? Well, we appreciate your input, and we don't do these things just as an exercise, okay? They really have relevance to what we do. What we did was, we took that input, and we then crafted the One City Action Plan. And now, what we have done, this is the first full budget since we finished the plan, we have taken that plan and said, "Okay, we want to show people how the dollars are being attached to how we go forward." So, there are three priority areas in the One City Action Plan, to improve the quality of life for all, which is the first area I will talk about, educate and prepare the workforce for the new economy, and then grow and diversify the district's economy. The first slide, and those of you who were at the, who were at the One City Summit, anybody remember what the top priority was there? Yes?
Housing.
Actually, it wasn't.
Housing.
Housing, that's exactly right. It was affordable housing. It was affordable housing. So, in the spirit of honoring what people said, I am proposing to put $100 million into affordable housing in this next budget, which will be a way of helping people stay in the District of Columbia, so that those who want to continue to live here don't feel compelled to have to go somewhere else to live, because they can no longer afford to live in this city. We're putting $87 million of that into the Housing Production Trust Fund. We won't have to make choices this year between the Housing Production Trust Fund and the local rent supplement program, which we've had to do the last couple of years, because we have enough money to be able to do that. And then, on the next slide, you'll see $13 million of the other hundred, of the $100 million going into a variety of other areas, to support the local rent supplement program, which is like, almost like a voucher that people get using our dollars to help buy down the cost of rent. You know, if the rent, say, is $1,200, you might, through the local rent supplement program, get a voucher based on your income that helps to reduce the rent by $400 or $500. Why? Because we are paying it to help people stay where they are. So, they may pay only $700, $800 or $900 out of their pocket, but the rent is actually costing $1,300, $1,400, and we're making up the difference along the way. We are putting $1 million into the H-PAP program, which is for first-time home buyers, $1 million to get people who are homeless back to, back in a stable place to live, $1 million in the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, which is to help people from families, especially from becoming homeless in the first place. You know, some families become homeless because they can't pay their electric bill, they can't pay their gas bill, they can't pay their water bill, they can't pay their rent. So, it makes good human and financial sense for us to say, "All right, let's step in and try to keep these folks from becoming homeless in the first place." So, that's what this program does, and that is to help pay those bills when they are at the brink. You know, a lot of people don't know the following, a lot don't know this, and that is, for every 10 families that present themselves for services because they are at the brink of being homeless, or maybe homeless, every 10 families, nine of those 10, we save off from becoming homeless in the first place. It's only one in 10 families in the city that actually go into shelter. So, and people, you know, what they see, of course, is, you know, the number of women and children that wind up in the shelter program, but nine out of 10 of those families actually are placed immediately, or kept where they are, or work with family members, whatever we can do to keep them stabilized, we do that upfront, rather than have them wind up being homeless. I'm going to, as a slide later, I'm going to save that, the Victim Services Housing Program for that. We also, our public safety was one of the priorities I had going into, into this office, and we are going to, we're funding up to 4,000 police officers. It'll be the first time in years the city will have been at 4,000 police officers, and with a growing population, you've got to make sure that you continue to invest in the infrastructure of the- in the infrastructure of the, of the city, and that is part of the infrastructure. Another part of that infrastructure is investing in the equipment for our MPD. $7.2 million a year for the next three years, which will be $21.6 million in buying new police cruisers and other equipment for MPD. And by the way, I don't have time to talk about it today, but I would love to tell you about a new effort that we have to actually reduce fuel consumption in, in our police cruisers so that, and, well, let me just say it real quickly. You know, you know that police cruisers, by virtue of their work, they idle, right? And when they're idling, they're burning up gas, right? Yeah, so we have a new device that we are funding this year. There's a battery that we can put into the, into the, into the cruisers. We're putting in 75 now in the new Ford interceptors that we purchased that will allow them to actually not have to burn the fuel. This battery will take over the, the process of powering the automobile while it is sitting there. So it will save on energy consumption, on fuel consumption, and also, frankly, will be better for the environment because we won't be polluting it with the pollutants, you know, from the, from the gasoline being burned. Hope you all have seen our Sustainability Plan also, which we're really excited about. We're also putting $8 million a year into fire and emergency medical services, $24 million. That will purchase a lot of new ambulances. We're purchasing almost 150 vehicles. Half of those will be ambulances that will, and a lot of people don't know this either, that about 80 to 85% of the calls now made by fire and EMS are not for fires. They are for emergency medical services, a huge percentage of them. And that's why we want to purchase more ambulances to support the EMTs that work in the fire department. So $24 million. We're also investing in our fire cadet and our police cadet program. I hope you all will steer young people our way. They can be trained to be firefighters, EMTs, or police officers. They will spend a year, up to a year, in the academies respectively. And then, let me, let me give you an example. We had a group that we recruited through our high schools in the city. And there were about 30 to 35 that came on. Every one of them, because I went to the kickoff of them, every one of them had graduated from a DC high school. And that means they live in the District of Columbia, right? They started off making $21,000, now they're about 19 years old, 20 years old, they were, they started off making $21,000. And when they graduated, those who finished the program, we had between 25 and 30 that finished the program, their salary was immediately doubled. They went to $42,000, which is about $20 an hour. That's not bad money if you, if you're 19 to 20 years old. Actually, that's not bad money, and I don't care how old you are. Our next slide is one that I think will be of interest to the group here today, and that is we are investing. We lost a good bit of money, federal money. We've had a lot of reductions in federal money for obvious reasons, because of sequestration and other issues in the city. And one of those was our Office of Victim Services, which deals with domestic abuse, which we know disproportionately affects the, the women in our city and other cities for that matter. We were going to lose $7.5 million, which would have substantially reduced the services that we have available. We have taken our own money in this budget and replaced every dollar of the $7.5 million that, we will have no loss in those services. As you can see, $1.3 million going to the Sexual Assault Nurse Examiner, the SANE Program, Sexual Assault Response Team, the Sexual Assault, the Child Assault Program, Sexual Assault Program and Abuse, Domestic Violence Intake Center, and an assessment program. Now, that doesn't add up to $7.5 million, obviously, but that's, that's just some components I wanted you all to be able to see. So what people don't get readily is that the dollars may look the same in some of these budgets, but they're not the same because we might have had federal dollars that we could spend before. Those dollars are gone, and we now are investing in our, our local dollars and being able to make sure those services are continued. So sometimes, let's say, you might have seen the budget was $7.5 million last year and $7.5 million this year, but a really radical change because it was federal dollars that we had before, now it's District of Columbia dollars to make sure these important services are continued. We actually have lost about $35.5 million in federal funds, right, Eric? This coming year, and we've replaced all of those funds. A big chunk of that is in our TANF program. Everybody know what TANF is? Okay. It's in our TANF program. And we are really working hard under the direct, the leadership of our Department of Human Services and David Burns and his staff to be able to help people get to work. I don't know if you all are aware of this, but the city made a decision back, you know, in mid-1996, 1997, to not implement the federal rules. Because the federal rule said five years on welfare, if you permit me to use that term, and you're out. That's it, unless you have some hardship reasons to, to stay on. And so what that did was, is the city said, "Look, we will pay for it, even though we won't get any more federal dollars for that, we'll just pay for it ourselves." I know it was done for benevolent reasons, for good reasons, for, for having a heart in these kinds of issues, but if you think about it a second, what it does is keep people dependent. It doesn't get people to another place. So we've, we've started to change that. The city said, again, "We'll pay for it all ourselves." We've said the following, and we're working hard on this, and that is, "Look, we, we don't believe that we should continue into generational poverty because," and keeping people receiving a check every month, which is not the way they get it anymore, but receiving a check, as people put it, is not going to lead anybody to being able to get fully on their feet. And I think you all know that the TANF program, for the, for the most part, probably 90% are women and children in the District of Columbia. So we have said we were going to do an assessment of everybody by the end of April, right, Deputy Mayor Otero? We will have, we will have our assessments done, and the end of April is next week, right? We will have all the assessments done, over 10,000 assessments, right?
10,000 of the 60-month.
Of the 60-month people, that's right, of those who hit 60 months. They will have all their assessments done. And by the way, we will start now routinely doing assessments, so that will be done soon after people come into the program so that they don't have to bump up against 60 months. The expectation is that we will do everything we can to help people get to work, but the expectation is that you go to work, that you have a job. And we will help you get a job, you will have an assessment. It's just, it's not fair, it's not fair to the women, it's not fair to the children, and it's not fair to the taxpayers. It might be a benevolent decision in some ways, but there's nothing benevolent about keeping people dependent and unable to be able to get a job. So we, we've invested, in this budget, we're investing $6 million so we could delay the implementation date so that people can continue to get their support over the next year. But at the end of this, this, this effort, people are expected to go to work, which I think makes sense. We are establishing something, I'm proposing to establish something called the One City Fund this year, and I hope you all will help us make this happen. The One City Fund basically says the following, that we have a lot of organizations, nonprofit organizations in the city that do wonderful things, and they don't necessarily readily find themselves in, in, in dollars that are available to the city. So the One City Fund would set up a grant program for nonprofit organizations, and frankly, it would, it would focus on education, job training, health, services for seniors, arts, public safety, the environment, any one of those areas. And if somebody can't find themselves as an organization in a category called Improve the Quality of Life for people in the District of Columbia, I'm not even sure why you exist in the first place. So that's the purpose of these grants. And I hope you all will help support this by letting council members know that we want to set this up. It won't be administered by the mayor's office or anybody in the executive. It won't be administered by the council of the District of Columbia. The money will be put in the community foundation, administered by them. That is what they exist for. They will actually issue the request for applications for those who may want to submit a proposal. They will get the proposals, they will evaluate the proposals, they will award the grants, and then they will actually administer the grants. They will actually administer the grants, you know, during the time after they are issued. Now, if you do the math, you can get a grant up to $100,000, which means if you do the math, you can get a grant that, that'll be, how many grants can you get out of that? Maybe 120, 125 grants? That's a lot of money that can go into our private sector. You know what, and we'll learn something from some of these grants that we can take and put further into the government, the funding streams in the future, and be able to add dollars to them because they are good ideas that should be implemented. So I hope that you all will support us. We can tell you how to do that. Sheila can give you the information on how to, you know, how to make it known to people that we want to support it. We have money in this budget to be able to extend the hours so that every library in the District of Columbia will be open every day. $8 million to expand the hours, and then another $2 million to purchase more books and materials for our library, seven days a week, ladies. And Monday through Thursday, the libraries will be open until 9 o'clock at night, and then they will be open, of course, on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday as well. And for those who have meetings, like you all do, the libraries are nice meeting places now as well. Some of them can accommodate up to 100 people. So you can get, you know, you can get these, these places in the evenings now because they will be open. So this will serve a lot of purposes. We also are proposing in this, in this budget to do a renovation, a modernization of our downtown Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Library. There's $103 million that we have requested in this budget that will get us started. We are proposing to put, we've worked with Jenny Cooper, the librarian, we've worked with the Board of Trustees, we've worked with consultants. So we're proposing to put during this renovation, four, five, maybe six more floors on the library. The purpose being that if they're offices or residences, they will generate revenue to help with the modernization and support of the library in the future. So that the three floors will be completely renovated in the library, the additional floors will be added, and it will create money to be able to get this done. In fact, what you see up there is really kind of a rendering of what the library would look when the renovation is finished. So I hope that this stays in the budget as well because it is a good thing. We also recognize that we need to make sure that we take care of our seniors in the city. We have committed to being an age-friendly city here in the District of Columbia. What that means is helping people to age in place, helping people stay where they are. One of the projects that we have launched is already underway. We are putting staff into the Office of Aging Services who will go into nursing homes. And their purpose is, we already have seven staff, we're going to add three more, their purpose is to go into nursing homes and do the work that helps to assess and identify people who could live somewhere else. I don't know anybody who, you know, says, "Boy, I can't wait to move into a nursing home." You know, and it's not, it's not, it's not a knock on a nursing home or a knock on the people because the people oftentimes work very hard there. But it isn't, you know, it isn't a place. I mean, most people would say, "I don't want to live, you know, yeah, I want to live in an institution." Nobody wants to do that. Or, "I want to live in a hospital." So this is an opportunity to try to move those people out who would like to be somewhere else beyond that. So 10 staff, seven have already started, three more will be added, they're already working. We also are working to make sure we save our hospital on the east end of the city. And by the way, I have stopped, I'm just telling, I've stopped using the term "east of the river" because I live, I live on the other side of the river. As soon as you say "east of the river," people have a certain set of notions of what that means. Yeah, and it ain't positive either. Yeah. So, so I use the east end. We have a west end, right? We have a west end over here, so why shouldn't we have an east end? So that's what I'm using from now, on the east end of the District of Columbia. In any event, we have one hospital on the east end of the city to serve 140-some thousand people, and we are going to keep that open. The United Medical Center, we have put a team in there for the next, up to two years to help straighten out the business operations of the hospital. And in addition to that, we are proposing to start the process of building a new hospital. For those of you, for those of you who know what used to be, anybody remember the original name of UMC?
K-Fritz.
K-Fritz, that's exactly right. K-Fritz Memorial Hospital. Thank you, Teresa. K-Fritz is exactly right. And then it became? Greatest Southeast. And now it is the United Medical Center. Well, you know, that hospital was built back in the late '40s, the early '50s. Nobody would build a hospital like that anymore because it's just changed times. It has four, capacity for 450 beds. Nobody, nobody would build a hospital like that. One, a lot of conditions that people went into the hospital for, they don't go in the hospital at all anymore. And then, secondly, some of the conditions that people went into for five to seven days, they now go in for one or two days. One of the reasons being insurance companies are not going to pay for those extended days. So we are proposing to build a new, more streamlined hospital. We want to start the process in fiscal year 14 with an investment of $20 million. It probably will cost ultimately around $100 to $150 million to build a new hospital, but there's also land down there that can be used to create assets, revenue, whatever we want to call it, to help pay for a new hospital. So that's our commitment to healthcare. By the way, we are, we are really working to build an enduring healthcare system on the east end of the city. Just about a year ago, last May, we opened a new Anacostia Health Clinic, which doubled the capacity to serve people, outpatient services. And we're building a new one down in Bellevue, which is in Ward 8, right off South Capitol Street and Atlantic, down in that area. And we're building a new one also in Parkside, which is in Ward 7. And the more we can put clinics in place, the less people will need to go to the hospital. You know, we tell people, we've told people historically, we have told people historically, haven't we? "Don't go to emergency rooms." And then that's all there is, where are they supposed to go to? I mean, they have to go somewhere, right? So we're trying to create a real healthcare system that will prevent that. The next slide shows our investment in the arts. We are proposing to put a quarter of a million dollars into a strategic plan to develop a real direction for our arts program in the District of Columbia. We're putting $5 million, which adds to 2.7, so an additional $2.3 million in our capital budget to support the creation of public art. So that'll be $30 million over the next six years that will be going into supporting public art. How many of you all know we have our own archives in the District of Columbia?
It used to be right there, right?
Yeah, it's not far from here, right? It's on Naylor Court. No, it's not here. Yeah, but it's, it's, they call it "in the alley." That's what, people, people describe it as "in the alley." It's in Naylor Court, it's down in, how many have been in that place? Where is it, Mr. Branham? Tell everybody.
It's that down, Ninth Street area.
Ninth Street area, that's right. Well, in any event, we are proposing to create a real archives for everybody in the District of Columbia. Put it in a building that people can go to. Wouldn't that be a great educational experience for our children? And everybody else for that matter. So we have artifacts in our possession that date back to 1790. And shouldn't they be on public display so that people can actually see them? So we're proposing to put $4 million in the budget next year, and then $20 million each of the next successive years to be able to create a real archives, so $44 million in the city. We are preserving park space across the city, investing, proposing to invest $50 million in Noma. Noma, of course, is the area around Florida Avenue, New York Avenue, North Capitol Street there, so we can make sure that as the buildings go up, we continue to have green space. $20 million in the Fort Dupont Ice Arena to help build, rebuild that and rebuild a second ice pad, which is out in Fort Dupont. Obviously, that's where the Fort Dupont Ice Arena would be, right? In Fort Dupont. Boy, I figured that one out quick, didn't I? We're, we're, we're already in the midst of beginning the reconstruction of Berry Farm Recreation Center, $26.4 million as it is reconstructed. And all, I'm sure all of you are familiar with the Southeast Tennis and Learning Center. And we're proposing to really upgrade that. We're putting $18 million in that next year. We are bringing streetcars back to the city. That will be a $400 million investment over six years. The first streetcars will be running on Eighth Street and Benning Road this year. I happen to be a fan of streetcars. We have to react, we, you know what, we have to recognize the following reality. If our population is growing by 1,100 people a month, in 20 years, how many people will we have added? Anybody quick on math? Anybody quick on math? We will have added 250,000 people in this city. Now, we already have gridlock. I mean, you know, even on a Saturday morning when you're out driving, there's too many cars out there. We can't possibly continue to add more cars and think that we can, you know, we can sustain ourselves that way. So this will be another form of transportation. We're reopening the Georgetown DMV, that's what the stat, the $2.7 million for. We have a new DMV that we opened about a month ago. Anybody been there, over in Rhode Island Row? It's really nice. You been over there? Really, it's really quite nice. And the DMV, you know, with Lucinda Baber's leadership, really is kind of a new place. You know, people get treated nicely when they go in there. You know, our grade.dc.gov assessment program, I think, has really gotten the attention of a lot of people in government to say, you know, "Well, I want to get my ages like everybody else." So they're continuing to improve services. We are going to, we are putting in this budget enough money to replace all the supercans in the District of Columbia, and we are really happy about that. We've got a five-year replacement plan, but the first two years, we will, we will use that to replace all the current supercans in the city. And then the next three years will be, we put in replacing and upgrading and making larger the recycle, the blue recycle cans that you have. We also are investing a million and a half dollars to help support a major project that our city administrator has overseen, and that is stopping the flooding in Bloomingdale. It is literally a 100-year-old problem. I mean, I don't mean that as a, you know, just a colloquialism or an exaggeration or whatever. It is a 100-year-old problem. And we think we've got a solution, right, Alan? We had a task force that worked on it. They've already started the work. That solution will be in place by, I think, March or April of next year. We've actually worked hard, we've had, you know, some, since that ratio, last June when we had flooding, we haven't had any flooding in Bloomingdale since. And we paid a lot of attention to it. We, somebody thought we, somebody said, "Y'all, did y'all find the switch that you had to go in and flip the switch in order to stop the flooding?" Yeah, I said, "That was it." It was a switch that hadn't been, yeah. So anyway, that flooding hopefully will be over. We have a project, y'all ought to see this, I can't go into great detail today, but we were down at DC Water, Wassa, about two, three weeks ago. They've started a project to create this huge tunnel across the city. There will be, the first leg of it will be four miles, and this piece of equipment is the length of a football field. And it drills, it drills, you know, under, underground, under the water, whatever, across the city to create this new tunnel. The piece of equipment itself costs $30 million. I don't know what they'll do with it when they finish with it. Maybe sell it to some other city or some other country or something, I have no idea. All right, next slide. We are giving raises to all of our employees in the District of Columbia. All of our unionized and non-unionized employees will get raises. We've got 70 to 75% that already have been, are either in new agreements or are part of the non-union group. Those raises will be effective April 1st, which means that we'll be retroactive, so people can start counting on their raise coming very soon. Second area of the three is educating our youth, and educating and preparing the workforce for the new economy. We're investing almost $80 million in public education. We're continuing to bring children with disabilities back into the city in our public education program. We're investing more money in creating capacity in our public schools. When I came into office, we were spending $168 million on, on private schools for our kids. We have now moved a lot of those kids, we had over 2,200, we're down to 1,300-plus at this stage, and the budget has come down from $168 million to about $80 million in this budget. So, but more importantly than the budget is the right thing to do. Shouldn't every child who can have a chance to go to public education? That's a part of your socialization process as well, being able to be around other children. So, all right. We are investing in our high schools. We are investing in the modernization. There's a new Baloo High School that's being built, and if you haven't seen the video on that, you really have missed something. New Ellington High School, or a modernized Ellington High School, that will get underway this coming school year. And then Roosevelt High School in 2014 will be modernized as well. I think Brian Hanlon told me $106 million will be going into the modernization of Roosevelt. Now, a lot of people are under the impression that Spingarn High School was closing. It is not. It's going to be converted to a career and technical education program. How many people have been around long enough to remember vocational schools in the city? Okay. Yeah, we had seven. We had seven. Let's, let's see. Phelps, Emmett Washington, Burdick, Chamberlain, Bell, the Penn Center, and I'm missing one. Armstrong, Armstrong. And you know, for whatever reason, rather than bringing them up to date, they were essentially closed. And frankly, we have a lot of young people who would like to be able to leave high school with a skill and go to work, and then maybe go to college later, or maybe never go to college. And I think that's one of the reasons why we've lost some of our young people, because they didn't have those options available to them. So Spingarn will have, will have a concentration in transportation, and I'll show you a slide shortly that, that connects this to what we're doing with transportation, and then healthcare, so young people will be able to be trained for those jobs. We're putting a good bit of money into middle schools. We're building a new Brookland Middle School and a, and a new Shaw, we're building that. And we will have during this, we'll complete the modernization in this six-year plan of all of our middle schools. And we're putting $988 million over six years into our elementary schools. And just some, some examples, like Shepherd, Hurst, Mann, Janney, and Langdon will get 14.2 million over the next couple of years. Now, I want you to pay attention to the, the graphics in this next slide. What you see there at the top is actually Benning Road, and then over at the top of the, the photo or the graphic itself is Spingarn High School. And right in front of that is the car barn that we're going to build, which will be very nice. In fact, the bottom one shows you a closer view of what the car barn would look like. So the streetcars will go in there, they will be able to be serviced, where there'll be classrooms in there, and it'll be right in front of the high school, where our kids will be able to get internships and apprenticeships, so they can get the practical training that goes with the classroom training, and they'll be obviously the top candidates for those jobs as they come out. We are, we are spending $10 million to do the design and construction of the car barn that will be developed there. We also are putting money, additional money in special education, again, to try to keep kids from needing extensive special education in the first place. The Special Education Intervention Program that you see up there is designed to be able to serve young people who, who are very young. We right now, and follow me because this won't make sense the way it sounds, we are increasing from 50% to 25% our coverage. Now, what that means is, we now cover kids who have a 50% level of severity and more severe. So we're going to add another 25%, between 25 and 50% to that, so that we can get these kids who, frankly, in some instances, if they are caught early enough, the disability will be eliminated. We understand, we, we understand now technologically how to do some of that. So from a, a human perspective, why wouldn't we want to do that? And of course, from a financial perspective, it will ultimately cost later. Anybody remember Fram Oil? When they said, "Pay me now, pay me later?" Well, we'd rather pay now than later. So we also are putting a million dollars, Deputy Mayor Otero and her counterpart, Abby Smith, who is the Deputy Mayor for Education, are working on the truancy initiative. They will have a million dollars to work with and perhaps more as the plan is completed. It'll be completed over the next several months, is that right, BB? Okay. And then we're putting money into UDC. UDC has a new interim president, and you may know that. He's been on board now for about six weeks, Dr. Lyons. We want to work closely with him because there's a lot of work to be done with UDC and the community college. The last area is growing and diversifying our economy. We've already talked a lot about that. Skyland is at the top of the list. I have worked extensively with Skyland. I said when I came into office and even before that, we were going to make that happen. This is a project that has been around since 1989, and people have talked about it, talked about it, talked about it, and it hadn't gotten done. We have gotten it done, okay? We have gotten Skyland done. Is that right, Jeff? We're on our way, aren't we? Yeah, well, we, we're more than that close. It, we, we've got one small piece yet to finish, which I think will be finished in a matter of days, weeks, but we've gotten the, we've gotten the legal impediments essentially stripped away, all but one. We have started to tear down the buildings. We have a design for the town center. For those of you, and you heard it here, okay? We have made enormous progress with Skyland, and we're going to get Skyland done, aren't we, Jeff? For those who may come along and offer you a new plan, remember, the plan is in place and moving forward, all right? Yeah.
What is that? Where?
It's in Ward 7. It, it is known to a lot of people because it is a project that has never been done. It, it is, it is at the intersection of Nailor Road, Good Hope Road, Nailor Road, Good Hope Road, Alabama Avenue, where they all come together right there? In fact, it's noted because we have three chicken places right there. Right within 50 yards of one another. A Popeyes, a New York, and a Kentucky Fried. And I think the New York and the Kentucky Fried are closed down, all in the interest of good health for our people. Actually, I like some of that chicken, to tell you the truth. Yeah, right. Putting $18 million in the yards to relocate some of the DC Water facilities down there to create more room for development. This will have a 27-to-1 return on it. For every $1 we invest in the District of Columbia, the economic development return will be $27, which is, will help us with our own revenue needs. Putting money in Popular Point to start the transfer from the federal government. St. Ease, St. Ease will be one of the most exciting projects in the history of the city. Now, I know that is, that is a, that is, sounds like a bit of exaggeration, but you should have been with us the other day. The west side is owned by the federal government, the east side is owned by the District of Columbia government. We were over there on Thursday, and we had, we, we've got a technology plan for, innovation plan for the east, the east side of the campus. We had about 150 people there, we had 19 universities that came to look at being a part of this. We have three technology firms that either have committed or are very interested in us, in working with us. First is Sidlum, which is a French firm that does lighting, using all kinds of technology advancements. The second one is a firm called Smart BIM. BIM means Building Information Management. And the technology they are using to build, to build, construct buildings at this stage is phenomenal. They want to locate an innovation center there as well. And the third one, you all may have heard of this firm before, they're located, they are located in Redmond, Washington. They've never developed a, an innovation center in the US outside of Redmond, Washington. Y'all ever heard of Microsoft? And so, we, they, there were two of their officials with us on Thursday as well. This will be one of the most exciting projects in the history of this city. Now, connect the dots. In building a Baloo High School, we're going to have a STEM program in the science, technology, engineering, and math. Baloo High School is right around the corner from the, from the east side of the St. Elizabeth Campus. The internship opportunities that will be available to our kids will be absolutely phenomenal. And on the east end of the city, ladies and gentlemen, on the east, you notice I said "east end," east end of the city, they will be phenomenal. And frankly, if we can, if we can lift up, which we are working to do, lift up the east end of this city, the economic and human benefits of this city will be absolutely extraordinary. The next slide shows the streetcars again, I'm not going to go back over that. The one thing I want you to, we're building, we're proposing to build a new Frederick Douglass Bridge, which is on its last leg. It's got maybe seven or eight years left. Instead of, "Oh, seven, eight years, that's a long time." No, it's not. If you're going to build a new bridge, it'll take six years to build a new bridge. So, we're proposing to put in $622 million in building a new bridge, which goes from Ward 6 over to Ward 8. Everybody been on the Frederick Douglass Cap, South Capitol Street Bridge. In any event, $200 million of it will come from the federal government as well. How many people have, have a copy up or seen our sustainability plan? Wow, I wish everybody raised their hand on this one. I invite you all to go on the website, it's sustainable.dc, sustainable.dc. And check it out, I think we have one of the most aggressive sustainability plans in America. It's for the next 20 years, 143 initiatives, 66 of which are already underway, some of which will be achieved in the next year or two. So we went through, we asked the staff to go through the, the budget, and they've identified around 200 capital projects that in one way or another are related to our sustainability goals, in transportation, water, food, the built environment. We have more green roofs, square feet of green roof than anywhere in this, in the nation at this stage, which will have major impacts on energy. We have, I think, we may have more LEED-certified buildings, at least per capita, I know, than anywhere in the nation at this stage. And the health, the, the bottom line, it says "the budget challenge," that's where we gave grant opportunities to our own agencies, and that's where the proposal came from to do, remember I talked about the battery in the police cars? That's where that proposal came from. And we've got, we've got eight, we've got 12 projects across eight agencies, and we're going to try to do that again in this year's budget. Last two slides are, you know, we've done a lot in this budget, we couldn't do everything, so we set up a, a priority list of things that we would do if we get additional revenue, and we think we will, I really do. We're doing well. I mean, I, I swear, I, when I go around the city now, I look to see how many people are doing what in the city, and hoping that they're spending money in the process. I, I speak, you know, at a lot of conferences as well, and what I tell the people from other places is that, make sure they spend every dime while they're in the District of Columbia. Spend every dime. And that it doesn't have to be cash, it can be credit cards, it'll be checks, and if you got good credit, we'll take your IOU also. So, and that'll, of course, help us generate additional dollars for the city and help to support some of these needs that we haven't been able to meet. So with that having been said, let me open it up for questions at this stage.
Hi, Mayor Gray, you have embraced technology, very much so. And usually, in technology, it is occupied by younger Silicon Valley types, et cetera. And yet, the new jobs are going to be computerized, et cetera, for people, especially getting off TANF, et cetera. What bridges have you, or do you foresee, for having girls, mothers, aunties, and grandmothers online, working in the cloud, and contributing to the new knowledge economy, so that that bridge between your technology plan and your women's summit plan are integrated?
What we're looking to do is, we're looking to embed technology in everything. You know, I'm going to use a very simplistic example, and that is, you know, 40 years ago, somebody said, "Pencils are really needed in our society." How are you going to train people to, to use pencils? That is, you make sure there's a pencil everywhere, and you make sure there's, people know how to use pencils, because technology is a, is a means to an end. It is not an end, it is a means to an end for the most part. It's creating applications to do things that we haven't done before. So, we're looking at every avenue possible to embed technology into this city. For example, we have worked with a number of the technology firms to take our kids into summer youth employment program. You know, we are paying, we're paying the, the wage, but they are taking dozens and dozens of kids this summer, and we're asking every technology firm in the city to do that. We have worked with, for example, I was there last night, they had the official kickoff of 1776. I don't know if you all are familiar with 1776, but it is a startup. They create space for little fledgling firms, I got you, that, little fledgling firms that want to, you know, have a good idea, it creates very inexpensive space for them to be It creates very inexpensive space for them to be in. We have actually contributed $200,000 to help them get started with the space. They have, they have 75 startups before they even open the door. Now, they've gone down to the next floor. They've got options on three additional floors in addition to the first one they're in. So, they're going to be expanding tremendously as well. That will be a way of getting our young people in. We're working to, you know, through the community college, through UDC, to create coursework. The outcome that is desired is to get technology as much of a part of everyday life for people as we possibly can. Technology shouldn't be over there, or for those people over there. It should be everywhere, and it should be for everyone, because that is the communication method of the future. Let's go right here, and then we'll go, walk our way back.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. I'm Lois Tett. I have a concern for the TANF people that are going to be ex-evicted after five years. I do think that there should be a limit as well. But what is the number on this? And probably I find out with this is your daycare system.
The dead cap.
I've never seen a daycare system so messed up.
Daycare, oh.
They want, they have the people, they want them to come and bring the babies, and come out there and stand in a line from 5:00 on with the baby, without an appointment, without even telling the people they're coming. They only have one for the whole city. That's why I ask you what the numbers are. And you wonder why these people don't have jobs and are training. They can't get daycare. Before, previously, there were daycare centers around for you to go and apply. You have one. You can't even call them and get an appointment. When you call, you put on your 24-hour, then you never call them back. But I did. One of my grandpeople was having a problem with this, and she told me, she went down there, they said, no.
I'm going to ask you to, to, let me tell you.
This is it. I call the health department, and that's the only way I got a call back. This system stinks. If you want people to have jobs and education and off welfare, put some money here.
Well, I, I actually think we are putting the money there. And I'll tell you this, wait a minute, let me finish. I listened. We have the most robust early childhood education program in America at this stage. Now, though, if you want to go out, I did the legislation when I was on the council, and I have followed it extremely closely since I've been in this office. There is nobody in America, and I can show you the data, that has an early childhood pre-K program that is more extensive than we have. We have a seat now in the city for every three- and four-year-old in the District of Columbia, whether they are in a TANF program or not, because my belief is that we, we should have school for kids starting at age three. I think, I think waiting for age five for kids to start school is a mistake. Now, one of the things we've got is a distribution problem. We've got some areas of the city where there are, there are more kids, and there are seats convenient to their neighborhood, and then we've got some areas of the city where there are not enough kids to fill up the seats. So, we're going to have to figure out a redistribution plan. But we're putting, we're putting early childhood education into all of our public education programs at this stage, into our charter schools, as well as our, as well as our DCPS schools. And I'll be happy, I don't really want to wind up in a debate about that today. We'll be happy to follow up with you.
He must come to school until they're three, and then they go to school.
It is free.
No, no, three years old.
Oh, three.
They don't have to go to daycare, because they're not going to get assistance.
It's not daycare.
But that's what she said.
Yeah, it's not daycare. It's going to school.
No, going to school at three, I understand that.
Yeah.
Six months and on, it's go to school, it's daycare.
Yeah, well, we, if you notice in this budget, we're proposing, if we get more money, to put more money in infant and toddler care as well. Again, I am very committed to, to early childhood education, and the reason why I am is because I think it makes a difference ultimately in, in how our children perform. Are you all aware that 92% of brain development has occurred by the time a child is five?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. That's, the research actually supports that. Well, let me move on. I actually am moving along a little, let me tell you why I am. We had a police officer that you will recall was murdered, and I'm going to go to his funeral. So, I'm going to, so I'm going to try to move along a little rapidly here.
Hi.
How you doing?
My name is Hazel Thomas, and I'm part of the DC Federation of Democratic Women. And one of our interests is housing, particularly for senior citizens, and a type of housing that we really would like for you to pay attention to and hopefully create, because it doesn't really exist in, in Washington. As our population gets older, we find many of us sort of in that sandwich generation, and we're taking care of elderly parents. The kind of housing that we need is housing where you have like two master bedrooms, housing that's for, for mom, and housing for us. It doesn't exist. And so, I would hope that you would, has there been any plans to create housing that's multi-generational?
Well, the plan, the plan that, you know, the $100 million that we're putting in, we will try to, as best we can, understand what kind of housing is needed in the District of Columbia as best we can. We've gotten a lot of input on that. A lot of this will be built through our Housing Production Trust Fund. We also are trying to figure out, too, this is what our Age Friendly City and Aging in Place programs are about, that are through the Office of Aging Services, and that is, a lot of our folks already are in a particular place, and they don't necessarily want to leave, but they may not be able to stay there unless something changes. So, we're trying to figure out now, through our Office of Aging Services, what it is we can do to create additional accommodations, additional services, that will allow people to stay where they are. Because I think if we've got to build, you know, housing for everybody that may need such housing, I don't know if we'll ever get it done.
Ground for glass, we will.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
I'm going to ask you all to ask you questions quickly, because I really do.
I'm going to ask my question quickly. I want to go back to the TANF and the unskilled workers. And in reading Trends 2012, it says that the room is going to be more valuable than the computer, because the computer cannot clean the john and the floor and empty the ashtrays or whatever. We have nothing that I can find to aid the unskilled worker who cannot go to the computer. They do not have the skills now, and you have to include that, the returnees to the city from the correctional system. And women get caught up in that more and more, and all the things I hear, I hear, the men are going to be computer-trained, and I know where the training is, and TANF is not doing it. Please tell me where in the budget I can find some money that's going to help women who are unskilled.
You'll find it in DHS, you'll find, you'll find, you'll find it in DHS. And that we can't, we didn't go through everything today. We have anybody from DHS that's here? Deputy Mayor, why don't you talk a little bit about, I mean, we have really tried to retool the TANF and homeless families programs in ways that I couldn't even talk about today. But we're talking about people who may have very low levels of skills, who we're trying to get to work. It starts with the assessment, and then from...
Thank you. I think the most fundamental piece of that is the assessment, and then, based on the assessment, because I think what every single person that walks in that door has very specific needs. And what that assessment does is it allows us to understand what those needs are, and then build a plan that is, that is tailored for that person. So, the assessment is critical, but the most critical part of that then is the individual plan. That, that plan then allows that family, and many of them headed by women, to then determine what steps need to be taken to get to self-sufficiency. For some women, it may be dealing first with issues of mental health before they can even begin to get the skills they need to move into the job. For some people, it's, I've, I've had job experience, I just need to tweak my, my skills, and I'm ready for another job. So, it really varies across the board. And you're right to be concerned about it, and, and so, we have worked very hard to retool the organizations that provide the training. There are a lot of people who were in the business of providing training and got, had legacy contracts to do that. Those are gone. We have revamped those so that when people go through training, they actually get a training. So, I think that's the most, the most critical part of it.
I might add something else to this also, and I base this on my experience. Many of you know, I've, I've worked in this city all my life, and I've worked with people who have been in difficult circumstances. I'm going to add three other factors that have nothing to do with the skill. And that is, if people show up every day, if they show up on time, if they come with a positive attitude, people will work with you, they will work with you, because we've got a lot of people who have attitudes when they come to work, they don't come on time, and they don't show up every day. And people, and, and people who have work to be done, they want reliable folks, and it's hard, that's why I want to have kids in early childhood education, because you can teach those soft skills at an early point. You know, nobody wants to be dealing with somebody who, oh, I'm sorry, but I had to go down to the store today, and you know, I'm sorry, I'm two hours late, I'm sorry, I'm sorry I didn't call you, but you know, I'll, I'll call you tomorrow if I can make... Nobody wants to hear that stuff, okay? People want their jobs done. And there are a lot of tourism and hospitality jobs in this city that don't require high levels of skills, but they do require a high level of commitment to show up, to show up on time, and come with a positive attitude. Yes.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. I'm Janice Hazel, Commissioner in 7005 East Capitol, Benning Road area. And I want to expand on what our gentle lady said earlier regarding technology, particularly in those areas east of the river where there's real economic disparity. There's a serious digital divide that is widening, because those of us who live east of the river, the wiring isn't there, we can't get FiOS, our...
East, yes.
Well, let me finish. But we, we need to look in our budget appropriation and authorization cycles for building out broadband in terms of hotspots throughout the areas that have lower income rates and can't get the lower packages. There are providers, for instance, in Ward 6 that can get internet for $18 to $36. You come across towards 7 and 8, where the incomes are lower, and you can't get it. So, I encourage you in your next budget cycle to really look at broadband, universal broadband technology that provides hotspots in neighborhoods so that we can pull the signal into our homes, because what's happening? We're getting equipment, particularly our, our children, but it's getting stolen when they take their laptops, netbooks, iPads out of the house, then they still can't get access. So, it's broadband technology.
Let me, let me just, let me just indicate, and I'll do it as quickly as I can, that that is exactly what we are doing. I was out when we started the, we started in Barry Farm with, with, through our OCTO. I don't know if anybody from OCTO was here can talk about, we have, we have a 100 gigabit system in this city that no other jurisdiction has, and we started the wiring, to use your term, we started the wiring on the east end of the city, recognizing exactly what you have stated, and that is, that there is a digital divide, which trying to figure out ways to increase capacity. We're doing it in our schools. You look at what we've done in Anacostia, what we've done in HD Woodson, what we're doing in Baloo, what we're doing in, we did six, seven, eight, I'm not sure, elementary schools last summer in Ward 8 alone. So, there is a reality, there is a recognition of that, and there is, there are efforts that are ongoing. In fact, we have finished, I think we finished Ward 8. Now, FiOS, of course, is a Verizon product. We don't, we, the only control we had over that was to say, when I was on the council, here are, here is the pattern that you have to follow in order to, to install FiOS. And actually, Ward 8 was on the top of the list, to be able to install FiOS. So, while I think that there's more work to be done, I think there's a lot of work, a lot of emphasis that's been placed on the east end, and I can tell you, I can get you connected with OCTO if that would be helpful, so they can show you in detail exactly what we've done with laying out our own systems in the city to make access easy, more easily available. Comcast came in with a program, a program, because I was with them over at Kramer School, where it was announced, where they are, I think, charging like $9 and something a month in order to connect to Comcast. Again...
If you're a child receiving TANF, but that doesn't reach seniors and working...
Yeah, yeah, but it gets, it gets the process started. It gets the process started. What I'm trying to respond to is that there is a recognition of this, and there is a commitment to doing it, and we're already making progress. Whether we're fully there or not, I don't think so, but there is a commitment. That's what one city means to me. It should be, it should be eight wards that have equal access to information and services and products, and that's what we've really tried to focus on, is making sure that access is available to people no matter where they live in the District of Columbia, not just the techno, technology access, but access to whatever else the city offers. You're welcome.
Hi. My name is Val Velat, and I'm the president of the DC Abortion Fund, a small nonprofit here that works to help women overcome financial barriers to access abortion care. As you can imagine, we feel the impact of policy changes as they pertain to DC Medicaid coverage really acutely, and I know that this is an issue that you've shown tremendous leadership on in the past. I just wanted to ask, with regard to an article that ran in the Washington Post earlier this week, cited a anonymous source from your office that indicated that you might be willing to compromise or use DC Medicaid coverage specifically.
Just stop right there. Just stop. Hell, no, okay?
Thank you. Thank you.
Would you like me to expand on that?
No.
When you, when people start dealing with anonymous sources somewhere, you know, that's, that's bogus right from the very beginning. And frankly, do you all recall, do you all recall that I, I rejected budget autonomy when that was put in front of us? And I am not going to sell out women in order to be able to get budget autonomy. You know, we, we deserve budget autonomy, because we deserve budget autonomy. It shouldn't cost us anything more than it costs anybody else. Women should not have to pay inordinately to be able to enjoy the same rights as everybody else. And you know what? I will fight with you right down to the last, and if we don't get budget autonomy by the year 2050 or whatever, then because of this, I'm not going to agree to such a compromise. I will not do it, okay? And by the way, by the way, just so you know, we have, we have, we have a good friend in Congressman Darrell Issa. We've been working very closely with him, and he's too, is somebody that says, no, we shouldn't, we shouldn't have to do that, and we're not going to do that. I mean, I don't even want, I don't even, I wouldn't even feel like we have anything if I had to trade that in order to be able to get budget autonomy. That's like getting budget autonomy and giving up women's autonomy.
Mr. Mayor.
Everybody clear about where I stand on that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Ms., Mr. Mayor.
We've got a line back there.
Mr. Mayor, you have an extraordinary vision for the city. The financial picture is an exciting one, it's very positive, particularly in the area of housing. You talk a lot about putting money into affordable housing. The definitions of affordable housing are tied to median income. The District of Columbia is blessed with a very high median income.
You call it blessed? I don't.
But unfortunately, most female-headed households are significantly below that median income, and therefore, the affordable housing that is being constructed in the District of Columbia, they are unable to take advantage of. So, their solution is to move to Ward 9. That in and of itself is problematic, but there are those who would suggest that there is an informal performance measure within the planning department.
Can I respond to what I think your issue is? Affordable housing, the definition, you're right, is tied to AMI, the, the area median income, which unfortunately includes areas outside the District of Columbia. It includes, and frankly, moving to certain areas outside the district wouldn't solve the problem of AMI, because it includes areas of Prince George's, Montgomery, Fairfax, et cetera. Now, AMI is a moving issue, it's fluid, and we are focusing our affordable housing efforts on the 0 to 30%. 30% would be about $30,000 of a household income, because the, the area median income... Wait a minute. The area median income is $102,000. 0 to 30%, excuse me, 0 to 30% would be nothing up to $30,000. So, that's where we're trying to focus this $100 million as we move forward.
When you look at the housing that is being constructed, that's being approved, and look at the number of units that fall into that category that are of over 600 or 900 square feet, which is unsatisfactory for a single female-headed household with minors, 900 square feet is not adequate if that's what's being offered, that's unacceptable, Mr. Mayor, if you can say you have affordable. Again, it is a question of, do we simply want to be able to say we got this number of affordable units, or do we want to have this number of affordable units in which residents, current residents of the District of Columbia can relocate their households?
Well, obviously, we want quality housing for people, and we want to keep people in the city. That's why we're putting, that's the biggest commitment we've made in this budget, $100 million, biggest single commitment that we've made. So, the point that we're trying to make here is that we want to continue to be a diverse city. We want to be a city that, where people feel like they can live. And I think we've made a bigger commitment now than anybody else has in the nation in this particular point, at this particular point in time. We, our goal is to try to create 10,000 units by 2020. Now, some of this also isn't just... Now, some of this also isn't just a, a, an issue of, um, you know, creating housing at the lowest possible income level. Some of it is trying to get people to a different income level also. That's why focusing not just on the housing and the affordability of the housing is the, is the total answer. It's taking somebody who may be making $15,000 this year to try to upgrade their skills and get them to $30,000 or get them to $40,000 so that they can afford something more than they otherwise could afford. Is that an easy proposition? No. But that's why I go back to what I said earlier. Getting these kids at the earliest possible point so they are at a different place, uh, you know, as they get older. And also, you know, recognizing that, um, there are a lot of jobs out here despite what people may say. And if you bring those three qualities that I talked about before, people will work with you a long time to try to help you adapt. Many jobs are lost because people won't show up, because people won't show up on time. And when they do show up, somebody wishes they hadn't. Ms. Douglas.
First of all, I'm going to glory to God and I just want to say, Mayor Gray, you need to give yourself a pat on the back for all the wonderful things that you've been doing for our city.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I just want to say, uh, my name is Dr. Douglas and I wear many hats. I'm a former state board educator, Ward 7. I just want to say it'd be great, Mayor Gray, if you would implement the program that was for senior citizens that could get their homes repaired. I think Marsha Heitz had that program once before, Mayor Gray. I know you're listening going to.
Yeah, I'm trying to catch my staff's attention over there.
Yeah, but I think it would be, be great if that would be an opportunity for those, because you have a lot of senior citizens that do have homes, their own homes, but they don't have, uh, the money to, uh, to have their places renovated. And I know the grants were in place once before. I would like to see that come back to help those seniors so they can get their homes renovated and receive those grants. And also the second question, where, um, where can you get the information referenced to the, uh, the fire department and also the ambulance services for those youth to get jobs that are not, not coming through high school? Where can they get that information?
You mean, you mean the cadet program?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Douglas? That would be through the, and, and there's both of them. There's the, the cadet program. You can call the, in fact, where is Steve Glade? Can you help him with that information? The, the cadet programs and FMES and the, uh, the MPD. Um, we'll make sure you get it so you know, you probably can get it on the website, but you, you'll be able to call also and we'll, we'll get you that information before you leave.
How do you implement that program again in reference to giving them grants that they can get their home, uh, fixed up?
You're talking about the program that used to be in DHCD?
Yes.
I don't know. Is anybody, Michael Kelly's not here. Is DHCD represented here today?
They could apply for the grant and then the senior citizens can get their homes all fixed up.
Yeah, you want to respond to that, Gigi?
There are still programs, but, um, excuse me, there are still programs, uh, but they're handled a little differently, uh, under DCHD. And I forgot, there's another agency and even with the, um, DC Housing Finance Agency, I think also has some type of a program. You can go online, do some research or call a couple of those agencies and find out what's going on.
Uh, Mayor Gray, I have an answer to that real quick. The Department of Environment still operates the weatherization program. It used to be that if, as long as you fit within the income guidelines, you can get, you could get up to $6,500 worth of free repairs, windows, doors, new heating system, that kind of thing. Now we've combined it with some other funds that we have, all centered toward making your home more energy efficient. You can get up to $13,000 worth of free improvements as long as you're within the income category. So all you do is call 311. The seniors can do that. Okay? And ask for weatherization program.
Thank you, Ms. Douglas. We got three more people back here. I'm going to have to, if we can make the questions quick, okay?
Good morning.
Because again, I don't want to miss the, the services for this police officer.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. My question is, based on your budget, I was wondering where you have the, um, the funds for education from early childhood up until, um, high school? I wanted to know if in there you had any, um, line item budgeted for, um, food and nutrition services, especially with Revolution Foods and, um, DC Kitchen? That is something we have to look into because most of these kids, the foods that is being prepared for them is not nutritional enough and they're not eating it. So that is something we should look into, to have healthy kids growing up, to get, to facilitate the things that you have for them. Thanks.
Yeah, they're, they're budgeted in different places. DCPS has an item in its budget for breakfast and lunch. The charters individually budget in each of their, because they're, they're their own local education agency, so each charter would budget for that. And then for the early childhood education programs, that would be in the Office of the State Superintendent for Education. And I know DCPS has entered into some, some, uh, different contracts as well over the last several months. In fact, they've started bringing down the cost because the food was, the cost of it was exorbitant and some of the kids didn't like the food either. So we've made, they've made some changes there. Kate?
Two quick questions. I saw on your list of renovation of high schools, three, but not Coolidge, so I'm questioning that. Uh, Brightwood, uh, Town Hall meeting, you, you did announce the Coolidge would be included. Uh, the other question quickly is, I understand that there have been, um, reductions in the budget for after-school care, which is critical for, for young families. And that will in fact help people retain their jobs and that's, I'm, I'm really concerned about that. Thank you.
Okay. I, I don't, I don't know the specific information on the after-school, uh, programs. Yes, Coolidge, we, what we committed to was to get the sit team started with Coolidge. Um, so that we are going to get started. They're going to work with DGS to do that. I don't know the specific budget information on after-school care, but, you know, just so that, just so that everybody understands, I happen to be a big proponent of, uh, after-school care becoming a part of school care because I really believe that our school day needs to be longer. Um, you know, I, I do, I do town hall meetings with our young people. I've done 17 now since I came into office. And one of those I did was last July and I brought together a group of kids. I said, "I want to ask you all a question and I want to have a dialogue." And that is, "What do you think about having a longer school day?" Now, the logic would say, "You ask kids that, you're going to get, you know, a negative answer." That was not the answer that I got. You know what they said? They said basically, "We don't really have a problem with a longer school day. It's what you do with the school day. If you add two more hours, what is it that we're going to do while we're there?" That is a fair question. Um, and so the, 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 um, point they were making was, "If this is an enriching, exciting, you know, thing to do, then we would like to be there and be a part of it." America, America is not, um, you know, not even in the top 10 education anymore. America's not even in the top 20. We are 28th internationally in education. And that is not where we were, you know, decades ago. We need to do something different. And a part of the something different to me is to get kids started earlier in school. Uh, you know, I, I've said to people, many, many, anybody who will listen to me, I said, "I will get a fetus into a program if I could." Because there is nothing that is too early. And I guess we do with prenatal care. We do have programs. Secondly, we need a longer school day and we need a longer school year. We're talking about the futures of our children. And if we don't get them at the early point, it's going to be very hard to overcome those issues as they get older.